At this point, if everyone else could please just be quiet or they're going to get muted at one point. Can all planning commission members hear me at this point, including Rod and Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, if I hear no, if I don't hear a negative, then I'm just going to assume everybody's a yes. Okay, at this particular point, I am going to call the planning commission meeting to order on of May 7th, 2020. And would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? How's that? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you, everyone. Roll call, please, Whitey.
Keith Fell.
Here.
Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Here.
Harold Bane.
Here.
Mark Borchardt. Tom Cosell. Robert Muesling. Robert?
Yes, yes.
And Kathy Schweickert, the chair.
I'm here.
Although I'm showing up as already Bryson, but it's Kathy Schweickert. Just for everybody's understanding, Ed Keller is of what, a week or so, two weeks ago submitted resignation. So Ed Keller is no longer on the planning commission and he obviously was really missed, but he's a long time member. So I just wanted to let everybody know that. With that, we're going to move on to item number four, which is approval amendments to agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, who is that?
Keith.
Keith. Keith, oh, okay, I'm looking down at the paper.
I'll second it.
Mark?
Mark.
Oh.
Tom.
Ah.
Tom Cosell. Mark, okay, Tom, you can have it.
We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, roll call, please, or yeah, roll call, please, we're going to do roll calls.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Tom Cosell.
Yes.
Robert Muesling.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
And Kathleen Schweickert.
Yes, thank you. Item number five, approval of minutes.
Has passed.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't parse it off, my apologies. Item number six is new business and new business entails a public hearing through the address of 9034 Field Road. And before we start this public hearing, I'm going to read the public hearing, public comment rules, which are printed on the back of all agendas and are available on our website. Number one is all comments must be made through the chairperson. Comments directed to the applicant from the audience are prohibited. Two, individuals wishing to speak have time limits, three minutes for each member of the general public, six minutes for a spokesperson of a larger group, for example subdivision, association, condo, et cetera. Three, anyone wishing to speak is asked to sign the sign in sheet, which doesn't really work. So what we're going to ask you to do tonight is please be patient with us. This seems to be what we're going to have to be doing for meetings for the next month or so. So what we're going to ask you to do, as we would normally do, is ask you to state your name. I would request that you spell it and your address, please. So that way the recording will have it and our secretary will be able to continue on with that, okay?
Kathy, can you let them know that they'll get unmuted if they wave their hand, so I know they want to speak?
Go ahead, say that one more time, Chris, I'm sorry.
Can we let the public know that's listening, that if they want to speak, if they wave their hand or if they have access to the computer to do one of the reaction symbols, the thumbs up or a hand, that I'll unmute them so that they're able to speak at that time?
Sounds perfect. Hopefully, everybody understood that and we should be all set with that. Item number, or number four is each individual will be allowed to speak once. It will be the chairperson's decision as to whether rebuttal comments will be allowed. Five, citizens may appoint a spokesperson to represent those who agree on a point of view. Six, public comments on a specific public hearing request should be made during the public hearing for that item. Okay, so at this particular point, I'm going to open the public hearing, which is about 7:08. And I am going to call upon our planner Rod to, I believe has a PowerPoint presentation for this project.
Yes, I do. All right, can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, I'm Rod Arroyo with Gipels Webster. I am the township's planning consultant. So I'm going to go through a brief PowerPoint presentation that describes the application that is now before the planning commission. This is a little bit unusual in that this is an application for special land use, site plan, and for a soil removal permit. So your ordinance allows for the planning commission to hold a public hearing for the special land use and soil removal permit at the same time. And then your action for this type of approval for both the special, actually for all three, in this case, the final approval rests with the township board. So your role in this process is to hold the public hearing, ask questions, and then when you feel it's appropriate, to then make a recommendation on all three of these items to the township board. And then the township board will move on with the remainder of the action and the final action on this particular proposal. So what we have is an application for a parcel that's located, the address is on Field Road by Blue Water Materials. These plans have been revised and we're looking at the plans revised April 6th. The zoning of this property is R1 and the parcel ID is identified here. So the applicant is proposing to expand an existing sand and gravel extraction operation that's located at 3480 Fruit Street, it's known as Blue Water Materials, onto an adjacent site to the west and through the application request that I just talked about. The zoning ordinance for classification for this use is mining operation, including natural resource extraction, which is not listed as a principal printed or special land use in the R1 district where this expansion site is located. The existing extraction site is located in a property zoned I1. This is where we have an unusual situation where the state legislature has preempted local zoning in terms of how certain extraction operations can be permitted within a community. There's unique statutory language that says that an ordinance shall not prevent the extraction by mining of valuable natural resources from any property unless very serious consequences would result from the extraction of those natural resources. So if the township agrees that there are in fact valuable natural resources present, in this case being topsoil and sand, and does not believe that there would be any very serious consequences from the extraction, then the proposal may be considered by the planning commission as part of the recommendation to the township board, even though the property is not zoned for industrial. So the existing conditions is this parcel is over 41 acres. We know the basic statement of the use. The applicant has stated that the existing house, barn, and pond in the northeast corner of the site would remain to be used as a personal residence. We previously noted in our review that there are a number of vehicles that appear to be stored in the barn. The applicant has stated that most of these vehicles have been sold since that aerial photo and others are involved with the daily operation of the current mine. So the proposed use is an excavation area of just under five acres, the depth of which is 20 feet. The slopes are one on four on all sides lined with clay and a 15-foot haul route is indicated around the pit with access to the east boundary line and then using the existing access that currently exists. I'll talk about that in a minute. A proposed future use area is also indicated west of the proposed excavation pit. Planning commission needs to decide what they're going to do with that. Typically, with any site plan, if something is labeled future, it is not approved. If all the details are provided, then that can potentially be approved. But in this particular instance, all the details associated with the future area is not included. And therefore, in our opinion, the area identified as future should not be approved as part of this application and that that would need to be approved at a later date. Rather, the area that would be subject to the approval would be the extraction area that is specifically identified, where you see the one to four slopes and the depth of that particular pit. The access is running north-south connecting to Fruit Street. Previously, there was a proposed access over to Field that's been removed and is no longer part of the access. And in this plan you see on the slide, north is to the right. So this access running at the top of the drawing is actually running in a north-south direction. So Fruit Street, you can see at the very bottom right corner of the slide in terms of where it is and location. Okay, and in this particular instance, you can see the entire parcel and some of the distances to the boundaries. Essentially, in terms of adjacent residential, there's some adjacent residential up in the, if you were to look at this drawing as it's currently presented in the northwest corner, there's some residential uses there. It's actually not the northwest, but northwest on, as we're looking at it. It's actually northeast is in the real position. And then at the very bottom is what I'll call it, the very bottom of the drawing, which is actually to the west of the subject property, there are a number of homes lining on Maple that have access nearby. Substantial number of homes in that particular location. So some of the site plan notes that are included. All mining operations are going to comply with the township's licensing provisions. Hours of operation are consistent with what the ordinance specifies, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to noon on Saturday, no Sunday or holiday hours unless otherwise specified or permitted by the township board. No processing plants or use of explosives are proposed. Materials to be removed with trucks and typical excavating equipment like activators, dozers, scrapers, drag lines. Haul route will be to Fruit Road only. Noise levels not to exceed 65 decibels at the property line. Keep out danger signs to be posted, no less than 200 feet apart around perimeter of the site. And during the operations, a five-foot high fence is required. But when mining operations cease, an eight-foot high fence shall be placed around the entire excavation area with appropriate warning signs. And upon completion of the mining operations, a reuse plan will be submitted to the planning commission for review. So if you look up to your ordinance, under special land use, section 20 to point 36, covers the various regulations as they pertain to this particular use. Zoning restriction specifies that the initial permit period shall not exceed five years and then extensions can be granted by the township board in increments of two years. In terms of item number five here, all adjoining properties that permit residential uses shall be protected by a minimum six-foot-high earthen berm, not with not greater than a one-on-three slope and a three-foot-wide crown planted with appropriate grasses to stabilize. And then on the residential use side shall be supplemented by plantings with evergreen shrubs and evergreen trees designed to give the berm a more natural appearance. This particular standard is not met by the application. The applicant has stated that there's substantial existing landscape vegetation. There are trees that are already in place there. I would point out in your consideration of this, if that's the way they choose to go, that is an ordinance requirement, so that would in fact require action by the zoning board of appeals to waive the berm requirement. I would also note too that the berm requirement does serve more than one function. In addition to landscaping can provide screening, but typically, trees do not provide a significant noise buffer. Rather, a berm is more effective as a noise buffer because it actually puts a physical barrier between the source of the noise and those that are receiving the noise, which is the residential properties. So berms are typically more effective in terms of minimizing sound than just having a bunch of trees that are not on an elevated ground source. So this is something that may ultimately have to be addressed by the zoning board of appeals if it's not provided on the plan. Number five, the applicant has stated that providing the required berm would result in existing landscape buffer to be removed. So they're basically saying that trees would have to come out in order to put that in and they have not received neighbor complaints of being able to see the operations during the 10 years of operation. It should be noted, though, that this excavation pit is in a new location. It is closer to existing residential properties to the west and to the north in the current operation. And this requirement does not state that the berm is required along the property line. It could in fact be away from the property line, so trees closer to the property line can still be preserved and then the berm could be placed at an appropriate location internal in the site to provide the buffer. It does appear that the standard could be met with a landscape berm in that proposed future use area. So this is something that will need to be addressed. We've indicated what the applicant's response is and when it's time for the applicant to speak. I'm sure they can add additional information if they would like to. 2036, number seven, the applicant shall demonstrate by the submission of appropriate engineering or similar studies that a valuable natural resource exists on the property and that the applicant, by extracting the natural resources, can receive revenue and reasonably expect to operate at a profit. And then the applicant shall demonstrate the need for the natural resource. And so the applicant has stated the types of deposits that are to be extracted, including topsoil, yellow sand, and medium to coarse fill and septic quality sand. And then there's also a letter that's been provided from engineer Matt Mueller stating the test holes were dug, revealing material consistent with the current mining operation. The letter further states the amount of storage and the current sale price, showing there is a valuable natural resource and that can be extracted and sold for profit. And then we provided you that information from the letter that I believe you do have in your packet. So that's the applicant's response to that. Another issue is that your ordinance requires a traffic impact study that demonstrates that the anticipated impact in the immediate area of the operations and along the haul route. This has not been submitted. The applicant's proposing to use an existing haul route and is not proposing to increase the amount of traffic according to the information they've provided. The planning commission and/or township board could determine that this requirement does not apply as no new route is proposed or they could require a traffic impact study. Dust control is also a requirement, has to be controlled at the extractive site and on public and private roads used to haul the material in compliance with the standards and the regulations from St. Clair County Road Commission and to the extent necessary, Michigan Department of Transportation. The application and the soil removal permit indicates that water and possible calcium chloride would be used as the dust control method. The applicant's email indicates that several hundred gallons of water is placed in a holding tank and mounted on trailer pulled behind a farm tractor. It's discharged and this is done several times a day when the weather is dry. We suggest that the township engineer be consulted for verification of compliant dust control measures and the adequacy of those that are being proposed and that those be monitored if this is in fact approved. So also, the applicant needs to demonstrate that there will be no very serious consequences resulting from the extraction of these natural resources. In particular, that would involve the relationship of the extraction and associated activities to existing uses of land in the immediate vicinity and along the proposed haul route. The impact of existing land uses in the vicinity of the property, the impact of property values in the vicinity of the property and along the proposed haul route serving the property, based on credible evidence. The impact of pedestrian and traffic safety. The impact of other identified health, safety, and welfare interests in the township. The applicant should also demonstrate there will be no very serious consequences resulting from the overall public interest in the extraction of a specific natural resource, keeping in mind that a wetlands permit may be required. Some wetlands maps show that there may be wetlands on a portion of the site that would need to be verified. These maps are general, but certainly contacting Eagle to determine whether or not a wetlands permit is required, which should be a condition. And then the applicant or other natural resources of the township with particular attention to surface waters and groundwater aquifers, including those that may supply public water or private water systems. The planning commission and township board should determine if written responses to these requirements have adequately addressed what you believe is necessary. These items should be addressed to the satisfaction of each board, given that the very serious consequences finding directly relate to the request having been submitted through the requirements of the Michigan zoning enabling act. Also, item number 14, specific regulations where excavation in excess of five feet will result from such operations. The applicant shall erect a fence with warning signs, shall be wire mesh, not less than five feet. All existing fencing surrounding the perimeter of the property is proposed to remain according to the applicant. It's unclear if the existing fencing and the proposed fencing in the gates would completely surround the extent of the excavation. Foes fencing and signing closer to the excavation haul route than existing fencing at the boundary of the site would meet the intent of this requirement and would require additional layer of protection beyond existing fencing. So that might be a discussion item, just to ensure that all of those requirements are being met. Clay Township Soil Removal Ordinance regulates the removal and dumping of soil. So under ordinance 47, there's a separate permit that's issued, the soil removal permit. Under that ordinance, there's specific requirements, pit operations where an excavation of five feet. Applicant has to provide the fence, so we have that requirement. That's addressed in item 14 in our letter. Also, pit operations, any roads used for the purpose of ingress and egress to set excavation site are required that are located within 300 feet of occupied residences shall be kept dust-free by hard topping with cement, vitaminous substance, or chemical treatment. The applicant is proposing the chemical treatment route with calcium chloride. And the slopes of the banks of the excavation shall not exceed four to one. They do not exceed four to one, so it looks like they are in compliance. Where quarry operations result in a body of water, there's specific regulations that apply. The applicant should verify that the excavation pit will or will not result in a body of water and if there will be any pumping of water. So and then there should be a discussion whether or not that would have any impact on any nearby properties. And then there's some specific regulations about cuts closer to 100 feet from a roadway or 200 feet from any well or dwelling. So the south boundary of the site would be set back 190 feet from the south boundary of the property. It's unlikely that's going to be an issue because the property that's to the south, those parcels have all been combined into one and it's zoned industrial. So it's not likely to be an issue, but we raised that just as a point of discussion. And as I mentioned, a wetlands permit may be required. Wetlands map does show wetlands on the property. There are other state wetlands map that shows the wetlands actually smaller than this. This is the national wetlands inventory, so that needs to be verified. And by going through the Eagle permit process, that can be verified. So in conclusion, once again, this is a planning commission recommendation to the township board. Planning commission, township board should consider if it's appropriate for that future use area to be addressed. This future use area is not actually part of the formal review, so that's one issue. We've noted that the earthen berm is not met. We've noted the traffic impact study has not been provided. Well, we've indicated that the dust control should be reviewed by the township engineer and continually monitored. We've noted the status of existing fencing and sign protection needs to be clarified. We've noted that the compliance with the body of water standards is not 100% clear and maybe some more information from the applicant would help with that. Compliance with the excavation well setbacks may also be an issue. And then wetlands permit may be required. And then issues about the haul route easement have also been raised. We believe this is a legal issue that should be resolved through consultation with the township attorney. And so our recommendation would be that when you decide to move this application forward to the township board, that a condition of the recommendation be that the township board consult with the township attorney to address any haul route easement questions and make sure that they're satisfactorily resolved in the opinion of the township attorney. So and just a final note in terms of permitting, which is done by the township board. The special land use permit, as I mentioned previously, is an initial permit for five years with two-year renewals. The mining permit, which comes under the soil removal ordinance, is renewed by the township board annually, every May 31st. And it requires also that annually there be an inspection and an inspection fee paid. And then a public hearing is also required on an annual basis. So those who may feel that the operation isn't meeting certain requirements would have an opportunity on an annual basis to go before the township board and provide information to the township board in that regard. Also, a question about bonding for a use such as this. Under your zoning ordinance for all special land uses, the township may require a performance bond. Typically, a performance bond is done to ensure that certain improvements such as fencing, landscaping, berming, and other improvements are satisfactorily complete. So that is something that could be required. If you think that's appropriate, you could ask that the township board determine that amount potentially in consultation with the township engineer and post that. There's another bond that's part of the soil removal permit and that is a surety bond as part of the mining permit. And that's actually required. The township board shall, to ensure strict compliance, this is more in terms of operations, with the regulations as a condition of the issuance of a permit, either for coring or topsoil stripping, require the permutee to furnish a surety bond in an amount determined by the township board to be reasonably necessary to ensure compliance. In fixing the amount of the bond, the board shall take into account the size and scope of the quarry, probable costs of rehabilitating the premises upon default of the operator, estimated expenses to compel operator to comply with a court decree, a court decree, and then other such factors and conditions as might be relevant in determining the sum reasonable in the light of all facts and circumstances surrounding each application. So that is the summary of my presentation and I will turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Rod, appreciate your hard work into this. I would next turn to the applicant, Peizars or the representatives, to obviously state who's speaking and anything that you would like to add to this public hearing.
Yes, my name is David Highborn, I represent Mark and Sandra. For the most part, we don't, we agree with most of what has been said. The, concerning the plans that showed future use, that was simply something by the individual that drew the plan. So we are not asking that the board make any determinations of future use. Obviously, if there's something that comes in, they would have to go back before the board and address those areas. Concerning the truck route, the current route that is being used from the industrial site is the same route that will be used for this property. I appreciate the planner's questions about the easement, but the easement that has been given is for all adjoining, all property adjoining to the easement. And this parcel, first of all, is an adjoining parcel, but more importantly, when the... And this parcel, first of all, is an adjoining parcel, but more importantly, when the property is excavated, the excavation will then be stockpiled on the industrial site where there will be some light screening and trucks will be able to come in to load. And so everything is going to be, the actual removal will be on the industrial site. I think the biggest issue that we have concerns the berm and the tree issue. The site has a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five feet buffer of trees. Some areas is up to five hundred feet. Obviously, it wouldn't make a great deal of sense to put a berm around the site where if it then gets expanded, we have to move the berm because of course this is, this is, you're going to need equipment and man hours and time to do that. We understand that if we're asking that the berm requirement be waived or that there be a substitute really, that it may be a variance issue that has to go to the ZBA. But if my clients are going to be required to construct a berm at this stage, they would quite frankly want the trees be removed or as many of the trees as possible so they can put the berm near the property line and have, and when they log the property, that would pay for the berm. Because the problem is the product that we're going to be using is going to be used to build the berm. So it is our position that the concept of a berm is to, for screening, for noise and that a hundred and seventy-five, a minimum of a hundred and seventy-five feet of trees is sufficient. Obviously, if trees are removed, then a berm issue may come up and the township has the right to review that every year when the mining permit comes up. Right now, my client has been in business for eleven years and I'm unaware of any complaints about the project that they have ongoing on the industrial site. And the planner is correct that we would be handling the haul route with chemical treatment, which has been done now for the last eleven years on the road that goes out to Fruit Road. There's no showing, and since the same, we don't envision an increase in the truck pattern, truck usage on the property. And since we're using the same haul route, we don't see the need for a traffic study or matters of that nature. Fencing, the property is already fenced, except there are a few areas where some individuals decided they wanted to scrap the fence and the posts and seal them and take them to wherever you take scrap. So there may be a few areas of fences, some fencing has to be put up on the perimeter, but otherwise the entire perimeter is already fenced. And the township already has performance and surety bonds for the, for the operation. And I think that from this, there's, there's clearly nothing that would show any serious consequence happening to the environment or the township by the granting of this permit. While technically this is on a different parcel, an adjoining parcel with a different zoning, the use is going to be the same. And so there's, there's nothing that is going on in eleven years, which would show any serious consequence that would, that would result from this project going through. So other than that, other than questions from the board or questions that might get raised from the standpoint of the, anybody from the standpoint of public hearings. I, it's my understanding that the, my client has provided some of their own documentation regarding property values in the area. It's clearly nothing showing any decline. And that's particularly with the site that's already there. And there, right now, there wouldn't, there probably wouldn't be any pumping on this new site for probably two years because right now, the first thing that would be done is the site would be stripped. And before you'd even be getting into water, you'd be moving several feet of soil, topsoil and or sand. So pumping wouldn't start for probably two years. And right now there's pumping at the other site and there are no complaints that we're aware of. We certainly have never heard any before the, that have come before the board. And it is our understanding that there is one well area that might be, I forget how far away.
It's over on Field, which is quite a distance.
It's quite a distance. In fact, it's probably closer to the, to the industrial site and there's no issues with the well over in that area. So we see no consequences at all to the environment or matters of that nature. So unless the board has any questions, we would address that. Oh, I'm sorry. It was also a question of water discharge.
Quality of the water.
There's already, there's a DEQ permit or an IGL permit and there are no adverse issues with the water quality that the DEQ has dealt with. We have, we have the tests that have been provided to the board.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Highbar. Mr. Highbar, can I ask you a quick question? Are you receipt of the March twentieth, twenty twenty letter from Matt Vermillion through his attorney that wrote to the planning and also the PAC that included the ZBA regarding their issues?
I've got that letter, yes.
Okay. So you've got it. You've reviewed it, I take it.
Sorry.
And you've viewed it, his concerns that he addressed?
Yes. First of, yes, I have. Do you want me to respond to those?
Um, I think you already did to some extent. I think the one was concerning the road.
Correct. I think the, obviously, we are not asking the board to, well, we don't oppose the board for having the haul route to Fruit Road. We're not proposing to go up through Field. And obviously, if Mr. Vermillion wants to file an action, that's his pleasure. If he has a hundred and seventy-five dollars, he can obviously do that. We have already researched that issue and we feel very comfortable in our position. And more importantly, in the letter from Mr. Jender Nalik, he indicates that the easement was not, well, the easement isn't given to anybody. It's given to the land. And it gives it, it's given to the, all of the adjoining property. And this clearly is an adjoining parcel, number one. But more importantly, the trucks that are going to be coming in to buy this product are not going to be going on to this parcel because the now I don't want to use the word spoiled, but the dredging, the, not dredging. The, the, the product is going to be stockpiled. It's going to be screened and stockpiled by the various concept or types of sand. A truck will come in and there will be a front loader that will load it. That is all that will occur on the I-one or the industrial site. So we are doing nothing but taking the product from the R-one site to the industrial site to, to screen it, stockpile it. And then when a truck comes in, the loader loads it. So I'm not concerned at all about the road issue. We have no objection to the board requiring that the haul route is the Fruit Road route.
And this is two hundred feet farther from residential than the other side.
Right. In fact, actually, my client points out that if you, the Fruit Road parcel or the route, of course, has been in effect for over eleven years. And that is farther from any residential property than the Field Road site, which we don't want to use anyhow.
Okay, thank you. I'm now going to turn to the public. And if anybody in the public would like to make a comment, one way or the other, regarding this proposal project for the site. Chris, how do you want to handle this?
For those people that have access through their computers where they can physically see them, I would just ask if they would wave their hand. And I will unmute them.
Can you see that one person in the bottom?
I don't have anybody on my bottom.
V W Pool.
Yeah.
What was the name again?
V Z W.
Okay. I'm muting now.
So I would ask you to state your name and address, please. Can you hear us?
V Z W Pool you're on.
Are we getting any reaction from him?
Maybe he is muted on his side.
He's not speaking though. Sir, with the green, is that a green shirt?
The glasses?
Yes, you're, you're up.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I know, yeah.
Okay, I, my name is Dale Sterling. I live on nine four two seven Island Drive. Now originally I have two concerns. One is the road and two is the drainage. Um, when I got on about the roads, because these trucks are running non-stop all day from seven in the morning till six, my road has crumbled in the last month and I got ruts going down it on Island Drive. Um, the paved road is completely crumbled and there will be nothing left by next year. Now, the drainage was complained. We fixed that years ago because when they added on, all the drains on Island Drive were added on to all the new housing down Fruit Road and Taft, down Lake Point, when they added the, onto Lake Point, all those houses. So when it stopped raining for twelve hours, the water rose right up to the rafters in my house from Manavell all the way to Fruit Road was completely a hundred percent underneath the water up into the road for three days it took for it to go down. Because the pipe going to the North Channel was not big enough. Now it was determined that that is not a drain. That is Island Drive's ditch that Clay Township allowed everybody to drain into. Now, from what I was advised yesterday is this was going to drain to Fruit Road over to Island Drive. Well, that problem was fixed because I am at the highest point. Now it goes north from my house and south from my house. But if it goes down Fruit Road to Island Drive, that floods me out again. So when I talked to Clay Township, they told me when I was standing at the construction zone yesterday, from there it is running north to the drain in the north. When I talked to the Drain Commissioner in St. Clair County, he told me it was running down Manavell to Island Drive, which is not possible. But if that happens, then that puts me right underwater again.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it. Who else would like to speak? If you'd raise your hand. So Chris, oh, wait a minute, Kelly in the bottom there?
Yep, she's unmuted.
I might ask for Chris. Could you please?
Kelly, I have unmuted.
Kelly, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Kelly Nader and I'm calling regarding our property at nine zero nine nine Maple. Um, I did want to thank the planners for that nice PowerPoint. It was very informative. And thank you Clay Township for putting it for the public viewing. Um, I'm just concerned about this, you know, at one point on the PowerPoint, it says they can only go up to fifty feet. But then in parentheses, it says five feet. So I don't know if it was a typo, but that's really close to a residential area. And as far as we know, that's all zoned residential. And now it's a temporary special end use, I thought, but it kind of sounds like there's a future use plan, which is just going to snowball into something else. I'm concerned about the dust, the noise, property values, definitely have health concerns. I have a report from two thousand that has some a lot of chemicals. I won't list them because I only got three minutes. I'm worried about the wetlands again. I feel like in Clay Township, we're constantly compromising our wetlands. This seems like a want, not a need, not something that our township needs. There's many other places that have sand and soil. Also in that report, on the PowerPoint, it says yellow sand, but on this other report, it says it's gray and some other kind of sand. Um, traffic at the last zoning meeting that this was brought up, people came and they were complaining about the noise, complaining about the trucks. So there has been previous complaints. Now there's just going to be different neighbors and I think more, even more residents affected. I don't see how an applicant can demonstrate that no serious consequences can be, be assessed on our, when you're moving that much water, soil and sand in clay, how are they going to know what's going to happen to all the surrounding properties? And let me see. It seems like there's a lot of unclear requirements not answered. I would like a berm. A berm would help sound. It would help vision, but truthfully, I don't know how far they're coming to our property. And if there is a hundred and seventy-five feet of woods, like was said, you know, maybe the berm in my situation wouldn't be a such, a problem I would have. But let me see here. Sorry, I didn't have much time to prepare. I already said that. When you're a residential and you're going to temporarily use it for industrial, the forty acres, does that still remain a homestead? That's another question I had. Conservative estimate was they're going to be making over, well, about a million and a half dollars just on the sand, not including soil. And it seems like our surrounding properties are really going to be compromised. And I don't know what the amendment was to the agenda because you guys didn't say what it was. And my other thing is if, just to the planners, if you were making this decision for yourself and it was in your backyard, would you make the same decision if you're for the project? But other than that, that's all I had to say.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to make a comment regarding this? All right, Chris, do you see anybody? Because I'm not seeing anybody.
Now I have several that don't have pictures, so it's hard for me to tell if these are people that want to participate or not without unmuting them all.
Well, who would you like to start with unmuting? Just because I don't know how else to handle it if we don't unmute them to ask them.
Yeah, but David.
David? Well, unmut them and let me know when that happens and we'll ask.
Unmuted now.
Is this David? Hello? Is there a David who is just calling in not by any video? I don't hear anything. Anybody else?
Henninger? Unmuted.
Henninger, does anybody want to say anything in regards to this topic we're on for the Peysores? Was that a no? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
iPad three? Unmuted.
iPad three. Is there anything you'd like to say? In regards to the public hearing? I'm not hearing anything. We'll move to the next one.
Glenn's new iPad, unmuted.
Glenn's new iPad. Is there any comments you'd like to make in regards to the public hearing we're holding?
No.
Okay, thank you very much. Next one, Chris.
Cindy Valentine?
Cindy Valentine.
She's unmuted.
Cindy Valentine. Can you hear me? Okay, Cindy Valentine, would you like to make any comment in regards to public hearing? Hearing nothing. Let's move on to the next.
New? Unmuted.
Who was it?
New?
New?
Just says new. N E W.
N E W. Any comments you would like to make in regards to the public hearing? I'm hearing nothing. Let's move to the next one.
Donna Gordon?
Donna Gordon?
Nothing.
Thank you. Next.
Cerillies?
Trillies, did you say?
Cerillies. Cerelies.
Trilles?
Yeah, no comment at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I think that's it.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate that.
No problem.
We're also receipt of a letter from a Martin, Mercy, I'm gonna spell the last name, W U C H T E, dated May 2nd of this year. It says, "Dear Commissioners, this letter is to address my displeasure for the expansion for soil removal and mining at the Blue Water Materials," and lists the number. "I am sure you are aware this property has been for sale for over a year. The word is that the property owner has a buyer that will only buy if he can get an expansion. The current owner, if able to sell, will not have to contend with the results of this expansion. The property owners in the Township of Clay will. The constant noise, dust, heavy equipment tearing up of our township streets, lower property values because we will be in and an industrial zone must be considered. On a personal note, we have only lived in Clay for three years. My last residence was in Marine City, which I had lived in for over 40 years. My wife and I fell in love with the quiet community. Being able to look out our window early in the morning and seeing the wild deer turkeys, not the least of which are the different birds. My wife, after moving, purchased a wild bird book to identify them. We thought this would be our last home. If the Commission changes the zoning, we will have no choice but to rethink this fact. We have also made improvements on the property, which we would never have done if we knew we would be in the middle of a construction or destruction zone. Please do not change the character of this quiet and peaceful neighborhood. It will not benefit the Township or the community. The people of the larger cities move to our area to get away from the noise, pollution, traffic and congestion. Please do not disregard this goal." That's the only written response or, yeah, response as far as this public hearing goes. I guess I'll ask one more time. Anybody in the public? Raise your hand if you want to say anything. I see as in, what's Cindy Valentine doing? Just clapping?
I've unmuted Cindy Valentine.
Cindy, do you have something you'd like to add? I don't hear anything, so I'm gonna assume no. All right. I guess at this particular point, I can close the public hearing and we can, which would be at 7:55. And I will turn to the Board, planning commission members, any comments, discussion? And let's try to be reasonable with not talking over each other. How's that? Okay? Anyone want to start?
Since I'm over two up there. I'd like to give an evaluation of Island Drive. There's a gentleman that spoke about it before and he lives on it. The road is becoming deteriorated because of the truck traffic. I'd like to know if we have a weight restriction on that road? Does anybody know?
I don't know.
What type of trucks are you using this to haul the sand out? Welcome to the applicants.
Most of it's trailers, a single axle or a tandem. Once in a while lead semi, but the traffic on Island Drive is from the development of Oakdale. They've been having semis in for the last one or two months going in there through Island Drive to do that project. I have nothing to do with that project.
And also the pumping issue that the one gentleman referred to, I have not pumped water from the pit since sometime last summer. All water that has been discharged has been from Oakdale from the de-watering there, not us.
Just real quick, speaking of Oakdale, how many, that residential unit that's going in, how is that going to be impacted by the sand pit? It's relatively close.
We're gonna be-
You got a question for that?
I'm sorry, say it again. We're gonna be at least 560 feet away from that, same as we are from Maple. We're about 560 feet away and right now we have 560 feet of trees between the excavation hole and the edge of the property at Maple.
How did you conduct the, you said that the property evaluations aren't a concern. How did you conduct that?
I look on the pillow for the last three years on property values and I provided all of that to you. The ones that are in bold are homes that sold for more than asking price. And every single home listed there was sold from list date to close date, typically within three months or less. So the mining operation that we have currently going on Fruit Road has had absolutely no impact on property values. The property values I polled were for the entire surrounding area of Field, Fruit, Manavell, Maple, Island Drive.
But the sand pit is being relocated to a different area, which impacts the residential a little bit more than the current and existing sand pit. That's all I'm saying.
Probably about 150 to 200 yards, that's it, on relocation. It's not going that far. And also, I'd like to make a comment on the one neighbor that wrote the letter in. He purchased his home from our oldest son. Knowing that this mining operation was here- Ms. Pizora? I don't know what's going on, but you're cutting in and out. So at least at my end, we're not getting- Oh. I'm not sure what's going on. I don't know. Can you hear me? Hold on. Can everybody wait just a moment? Harold's waving his hand and it looks like he got muted somehow.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, somehow I got muted.
Harold, I didn't-
There's nothing to say about that, I'm sure.
I know you guys want to just keep me quiet and everything, I know.
You found a way to do it. Sorry, Ms. Pizora. Right now, what we're trying, I'm trying to do is like, we're just trying to let the board members ask questions if they want to. So board members, they know it's not normal, like we would be at the meeting. So Mark, do you have any more questions?
I'm okay with no.
Okay. How about any other board member? I see Tom's hand raised. Tom?
Okay, I'd like to know, where does the township currently get its sand?
Get its what?
Sand. You know, that we're giving away for the sandbagging?
They get it from us. I donate quite a bit of that sand to the township for free.
Okay, and is it, I'm under the understanding that you're currently out of sand?
Yes, we've been out of sand since April 24th.
And where would we go next?
Oxford or Jettow.
Holy smokes.
Yes. That's why this is so important to the township.
When I grew up on Harson's Island back in the 70s and 80s, we threw a couple of different high waters that were pretty bad. And we had sand pits right on the island. And that cut out the ferry and everything. Now we're gonna have a ferry dock that won't carry a truck. We gotta go to Oxford to get sand. We gotta figure out a way to make this work.
Well, I know the ferry is back up and operational and allowing tan, up to a tandem axle trot-
That's good.
Up to 60,000 pounds.
Well, that was something we never had to deal with. And it was a good opportunity for people in the local area.
All set, Tom?
That's all I have right now until I come up with something else.
Just wave at me. How's that? I'm, I'm seeing Whitey wave. Go ahead, Whitey.
Well, I would like to first make just a little mention of something that I don't feel comfortable just translating what has happened at the old site without any improvements to the new site. The first thing I would ask is that I have a print here that was sent into Clay Township on January 6th or so. And in there, you show a couple of lakes. And you also mentioned that that total fencing has been torn up. Do you have any fencing around the lakes or ponds that you indicate on the old drawings? Or new drawings or whatever?
Yes, the 32 acres that Blue Water Materials is using now has been fully fenced at the conception of the operation and is still to this day fully fenced.
Okay, thank you.
And our property on Field, for the most part, is fenced. There's just a few sections that have to be repaired.
Okay, thank you. The other point I would like to look at is in fact the requirement for a berm. Two, how well do those trees, now that you are closer to residential areas, protect the noise in the winter time through the trees?
Okay, first off, we are not closer with this new excavation. With the one that we were doing on Fruit Road, we were about 320 feet from the residence on Field Road at the east corner of the property. The closest neighbor we are going to be to now will be Maple and it's 560 feet. As far as winter screening, we don't work in the winter. We typically shut down in December. We don't open up again until April. So in the 11 years that we've been running it, we don't run in the winter.
There was something else that I had in here. And that had to do with both, the wetlands. Are you sure you do not have to worry about the wetlands?
We are positive. We had a wetland consultant look at one of our other parcels of property and he kind of went through this one at the same time and said he didn't see anything that would indicate a full study would need to be done. We are high and dry here. It's an old wetland study from years ago where someone just kind of guesstimated and thought there might be something here.
And a final question, which has little to do with this today's, but how did you ever get future use onto a site plan?
That was on my original plan as well and it wasn't an issue way back when, 11 years ago. But the engineer, when he drew it up, he drew it up that way. If it's something that needs to be removed, if that's an issue, we'll have it removed.
Well, I, I would almost think that it can become an issue since you have now, if it is on that plan, you have carte blanche to do anything in there without doing anything. And I don't think the Planning Commission can allow that.
We have no problem removing it.
Okay, thank you.
What's that, Whitey?
That's it.
Okay. Any other planning commission members want to ask questions or comments? Raise your hand. I guess I'm not seeing anybody. Oh, go ahead, Tom.
Can we get a document on that wetlands? I mean, it's nice that it stated it, but-
Well, no, you know what? At this point, keep in mind, we're doing this public hearing and we're making a recommendation to the board. So like everything else, when we get to the motion part, you can put, and Rod, correct me if I'm wrong, you could put in your motion, for instance, subject to confirmation of the wetlands, you know, things of that sort, subject to maybe our township attorney reviewing the road easement because none of us are attorneys except for Mr. Heibauer here. So those are things we're recommending to our township board if that's the direction we want to go or another direction. It's your choice. For instance, I- Go ahead.
Before we make a motion, but if Rod could pull up that summary again, there's certain things in there that they need to complete yet. Is that correct?
Well, I do have just a couple of questions because rightly or wrongly, the premise of this is these are trying to get approval or expansion because they have a new buyer who wants to buy this. No, that's not the whole point of it. This township- Ma'am, 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 just a minute. Let me finish my question. Just let me finish my question. Whether that's true or not, I just heard a comment about we closed December through whatever it was. And I'm looking at the plan, seeing the hours of operation, but I don't see anything unless I'm missing it of the months of operation. And I understand with the berm, part of the argument is we don't operate during those times of year so we wouldn't really need a berm because the natural foliage would take care of it. So I guess my question would be, do we need to maybe consider, you know, the months of operation also? Not just hours, but maybe months and days and weeks. So I'm just throwing that out there. So and Ms. Pizora, if you have something to add, we'll get to that part. So. Any other board comments? Rod, do you have any other comments now that you've heard what's going on?
No, nothing, no, nothing else additional to add at this point.
And Mark, I interrupted you or vice versa. What were you gonna say about the-
Well, we're just asking about Rod's summary on the items that still need to be concluded. You want me to pull that up?
Yeah, if you go over there one more time. And see if that's something they can do.
Last two pages.
How much the drill is gonna take to make this firm?
Last page, isn't it? Last two pages?
That's why, yeah, I'm getting it right now. Okay, see it?
Yep.
Okay, so the future use area is being deleted. Your berm is not met, so that's, we've had some discussion about that. Traffic impact study, they're not providing it. You need to decide if that's something you want or not.
Number two, earth and berm, they need to come up with a plan, whether it's an earth and berm or some kind of a eight-foot fencing, privacy fencing or something. They mentioned a, something that is alternative. Traffic impact study, I'm more interested about Island Drive and if that road's being torn up by heavy equipment. Number four, dust control, I'm not too concerned about that. That'll be taken care of. Number five, status of existing fencing is time protection. I think Whitey just did that. You can go to the next slide, Rod. There it is. Compliance with body of water standards. I think, I think she, if that's, if that's in fact that that, the analysis came back okay, then we should be fine with that. Number eight, I don't know, that should be up to the debate with the DNR, I think. Do we have anything from the DNR on it?
No.
Okay.
And that could be a condition of your recommendation that be provided to the Township Board to satisfaction.
Hall route easement, okay. Okay. Anything else on that conclusion that I missed?
No, it was just talking about the bonds that our, the Township Board needs to set.
Okay. Yeah, just a couple of those details I'd like to have clarified at some point in time.
Any more questions or comments for the board members?
I had a question about the road with the dust issue. Can the applicant tell me how often that road is treated?
I'm sorry, what?
I was wondering how often the dust control issue is treated.
Typically, I do the water on the road when it's excessively dry and the dust is blowing.
Because I can tell you, I know a few of us have been down that road and it's been bad.
You're talking about the road on the property, not-
I'm talking about the easement road.
Right, right, right.
Like the easement road, in the last couple of days, been down it and the dust in particular. Our water tank, the tire axle broke on me a couple of weeks ago. Mark gets to fix it. As soon as he gets it fixed, I will be back up and watering. Okay.
And can you give me any idea how often the township can spec that?
The township that I know of has never come and drove up and down the road to see if it's dusty or not. They come in once a year and do their inspection for the renewal, but that's the only inspections I know that they're doing.
Okay, thank you.
So Rod, would that be something to put in as a recommendation if and when a motion's made? That, that's one of the things-
That's one of the things that township probably should pay attention to or look at or any suggestions?
Are you referring to the dust?
Yeah.
Well, they need to comply with the, with the requirements and the ordinance clearly calls out that it needs to be treated to control the dust. So if that becomes an issue and there are complaints, then they'll need to respond to that. So I think it's already covered in the ordinance.
Okay.
So I think they just, there needs to, yeah, if there are complaints, they should, they need to respond and resolve them.
Any further comments from board members or questions? Okay, then I would ask the board members, what would your pleasure be at this point? Obviously, this is a public hearing. Again, we're repeating what Rod and I both said on behalf of the township board, and they're the ones who get to decide in the end what's going to happen, so.
And Madam Chair, just, just make sure that someone making a motion, make sure they have to keep in mind that they need to specifically mention the special land use, the site plan, and the soil removal permit as a recommendation to the township board and whatever recommendation they're making.
Special land use, site plan.
And soil removal permit.
Thank you, Rod.
May I try then to start a motion that we can then dissect and turn into something better?
Give it a try, Whitey.
I move to recommend the township board approve the special land use requestment, request for 9034 field for soil removal. as provided for by the Michigan Zoning Enable Act, MCLA 1253205, with the requirements of Clay Township Sections 2036.5, 2036.8, 2036.10, 2036.14D, as well as Ordinance 47C1E, Ordinance 47C1 as confirmed to have been met. Township Building Department to verify whether wetlands permit is required and the proposed future use is not permitted for the SLU and must be removed from the site plan.
Support.
Can I make?
Who was that? Tom?
Yeah.
Okay, wait, one, okay. So the motion was made by Whitey, support by Tom, and Rod's got his waving at me. Go ahead, Rod.
I heard special land use, but I didn't hear soil removal permit and site plan. Was that included in your motion?
I did say for 30, for 9034 field soil removal. And that was actually after the 74-14, whatever it was.
Okay, so you got that in there.
I, I think then.
I didn't hear the site plan.
You're including site plan in that motion?
Approve the special land use.
Special land use site.
That was not in there, site plan. Okay, and so it would then read essentially township approved the special land use and site plan for soil removal at 9034 Field Road, 7414, as provided by the Michigan Zoning Board, and then the requirements as we were, as we had listed on the last two pages.
And that includes a recommendation on the soil removal permit itself, correct?
Yes.
And you're also recommending that the township board then set the appropriate bond amount when they take action, correct?
Yes.
Can I ask if we're going to have our township attorney review the?
Bond?
The bond and also the easement potential?
Well, would they need to set a new bond if they already have one in force?
I guess that would be a question for the township attorney in conjunction with our township board.
Well, if I can answer that, they would because there, the reclamation that that's supposed to cover is now a new area. So yes, there would be something in addition because it's a, it's a newer area.
Okay, got it, Rod.
Mark, this is Whitey. Mark, would you make sure that at the board meeting, when you make the approval, you make sure that they do all that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. No, I have a question for Rod. Is this going to St. Clair prior to the board?
No, no, that's only zoning decisions that go there, especially land use does not.
Okay.
Whitey?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I ask if you would include in your motion for the applicants to specify their months of operation? And I don't know if they also included the earthen berm that needs to be met.
Yes, that is a part of the last two pages. In fact, it says earthen berm.
Okay.
Is section 2036.5.
Okay.
Okay, before we move farther in this, I, because it's a little bit confusingly to my point of view. Whitey, I know you cited like the ordinance numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
Would you mind going back? Because I see you maybe have been writing things down and restate your motion. I know, I'm sorry, but this is important. Wait a minute, I got Keith raising his hand. Yes, Keith.
Sorry, I just, my question also involves with the motion. Perhaps he stated it and I missed it, but the applicant before the recommendation is made fulfilling those items that Rod had listed on the second from last page there that were, need to be addressed.
With the requirements of Clay Township ordinance sections as well as to be confirmed to have been met.
Okay, is that the, the?
This, the, the, the two back pages.
Yes.
All items, yes.
Okay, that was included in the motion then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I've been writing on that for a long time. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I will obviously send it to you via email to make sure. Maybe even before we pass it on to the township. Move to recommend the township board approve the special land use request and site plan for 9034 Field Road for soil removal permit as provided for by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, MCLA 1253205, with the requirements of Clay Township's ordinance sections 2036.5, 2036.8, 2036.10, 2036.146, as well as Ordinance 47C1E, Ordinance 47C1E and 47... No, that's it. To be confirmed to have been met. Township Building Department to verify whether wetlands permit is required. The proposed future land use is not permitted for this SLU and site plan and must be removed. Applicant to specify months of operation as well as hours per day.
The review by township attorney of the easement issue?
Well, that should be, do we want to tell the township their job? I mean.
We're just making a recommendation. They can do with it.
Oh, okay.
They don't want, they don't want to, they do, they do.
Attorney review what?
Easement.
Easement. Okay.
It's up to them.
And let them decide whether they have to go to the zoning board or anyplace else.
That's regarding the berm, yes.
Yes.
Yes. So Sue, have you been listening and are you okay?
I'll get it.
Okay.
Give me your email. I'll send you what I have.
Okay.
All right, thank you. So we have the motion by Whitey who supported it.
Tom.
Tom, okay. Any more discussion? No roll call, please.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling.
Uh oh, where'd it go?
Robert, are you muted?
Is he sleeping?
Isn't technology wonderful? Robert.
Unmute him.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Yes.
Thank you. Whitey Simon, yes. Mark Porshard.
I'm only supporting yes until it goes to the board. I shouldn't say until it goes to the board. They're to go to the board.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Motion passes.
Yeah.
Okay, one other thing for Susan, for me, Chairman, if you don't mind, I'd like to have the, that motion to me as soon as it's in, in, in ink, if possible.
I have your email, don't I?
Yes.
So I can mail it to you. I can mail it to the committee as, as I submit it to the chairperson.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everyone. We are going to continue on now with our agenda, so I'm going to move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business, which I.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Did we miss the minutes? We did not approve the minutes?
We did approve.
We did approve.
Man, I didn't have a motion. I had, I had Whitey that said passed and I had no other roll call.
Oh, let me see.
I believe that was the approval.
Keith and Tom.
Yeah, but I believe that was for the agenda, the approval or amendments to the agenda. That wasn't the minutes.
Well, that's what I have on the minutes and the approval of the agenda.
Those are two separate things.
That's, they are.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to say because I got corrected that we had already done it and I had not checked off. I do make mistakes. The approval of minutes, I'm thinking it never got done.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted from our meeting, our virtual meeting of of course, now I can't find them.
April 8.
April 8.
April 8, 2020.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in support to approve the minutes from the date that Christine stated. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Keith Fell.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
He's muted.
Yes.
Robert Musling.
Yes.
Whitey Simon. Yes, Mark Porshard.
Yes.
Oh, my God.
Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
That's a maybe, I don't know. Yes.
Kathy Schweickert. Well, I'm trying to read the check marks on the sheet that I already had prepared.
All right, thank you for that mass confusion. We're still going to go back to item number seven now, which is unfinished business. I show on my agenda, there's no unfinished business. So we're going to move on to item number eight, which is Planning Consultant Reports Master Plan. Rod?
Okay, actually, I have a couple of items for you. One regarding the master plan. I know we had sent previously a draft of the vision statement and goals and objectives. I know you've had a lot on your plate for this evening. I was hoping, I don't know how much you want to talk about that. The one suggestion I'm having is that we're continuing to work on the master plan and we're going to have some more information to present to you. My thought is that why don't we hold off on all that discussion for the meeting later this month? And because you've got, you do have the public hearings on the mind on those boathouse and outdoor storage zoning amendments that'll be on that particular agenda. But if we don't have anything else, I'm thinking that could be a good, good agenda to really drill down a little more deeply into those recommendations, or we can talk about the goals now. So I guess I'm looking for input on that and then I've got a couple of other things when, once we get through that. What's your pleasure?
My pleasure would be we go to the end of the month, but that's just me.
No, I'm with you. I'm second to that.
Okay.
How about you, Tom?
Yep.
Okay, I think we've got nobody raising their hand saying, let's not do this. So how about we go to the end of the month with that one, okay?
Okay.
I just need to know what, how far away are we from completion? Like?
We are.
That line is what, September?
We will know, yeah, adoption probably by then. We should have a, a draft substantially complete by the end of June. And we would hopefully be then, once, once the draft is complete, then you have to get permission from the township board to distribute it to other adjacent communities and agencies for comment. And you can't have the public hearing until after it goes through that review period. So we would hope that approximately by September, we'd be able to hold the public hearing. So yeah, we're, it's going to move pretty fast now. We're going to, we're going to talk, we're going to cover a lot of ground at the additional meeting in May. In June, we need to leave a slot open on the agenda for substantial additional discussion and trying to start getting close to wrapping up, up the plan elements.
You think we'd have another joint meeting with it?
We certainly could. If you would like to do that, I, I, I think that would be a great idea.
Well, we'll do, we'll decide that after the May 31st meeting.
Okay.
Would you please talk to the, to the governor to make sure that we can meet in person again?
She already told me I could.
I don't think she's going to listen to me.
Well, the ZBA.
I'll have to look the board. No, the next meeting is May 18th, so if there's a question brought up, I'll need some information to talk about it.
Yeah, but it is in our meeting on May 27th.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So you'll have the information before the meeting.
Correct.
Correct. Yeah, I'll start with that then.
I'll start with that item. Couple other items for you. Just, just for your information, earlier this week, I was a presenter in a virtual seminar sponsored by the Michigan Association of Planning talking about communities working on master plans and zoning ordinances during the pandemic. And I went over some of the tools and techniques we're using and I did actually, you know, talk about different communities that are, you know, like yours, that are continuing to move forward and progress and stay involved with both zoning amendments and master plan amendments. So I think other communities were happy to hear that there are municipalities that are continuing to move forward with work and everything's not at a standstill. Things are being worked on so that you can continue to try to meet some of these targets. So I think that's a good idea that, and I think they appreciated that information. The other thing is I did, I think you did get an email from our newsletter. Our current newsletter, I think, is kind of interesting because it talks about, it talks about the pandemic and it talks about the future of, and a number of planning issues and a couple, I don't know, you probably haven't had a chance to read through it in detail, but just a real short summary. There's a lot of things happening that could impact how we regulate both transportation and land use. We have delivery bots that are now actually operating, delivering food. They're, they're in place at, at certain universities where students are getting food delivered to their dorms with delivery bots, small vehicles. And there's a picture of one in the newsletter that I gave you. There's self-driving delivery vehicles. The US Department of Transportation has actually approved a company that actually do public road testing of autonomous vehicle home delivery systems. There's delivery drones that are both, Amazon has a Prime Air airline and UPS has an airline and their drone airline actually has received approval from the FAA for out-of-site drone operation and including heavier packages. All of that is continuing to happy, happen. We have e-cargo bikes, which are electric bikes that are, have cargo on them. Do they travel on roads? Do they travel on sidewalks? Should they travel in bike lanes? Where should they travel? Now, there's a lot of interesting questions about some of those things that we're seeing happening. So we did talk about how scenario planning might be something interesting to talk about positives and negatives that can come out of the pandemic and how we might react to those. Now, there's a lot of interesting questions about some of those things that we're seeing happening. So we did talk about how scenario planning might be something interesting to talk about positives and negatives that can come out of the pandemic and how we might react to those. Interesting thing that's being discussed is curb areas, like along the edge of roadways. Would you have those be parking part of the time, then be delivery areas for bots part of the day? And then maybe that would be an area for drop-off and pickup of ride-sharing services another part of the day. And might we try out some of these things with short-term trial basis or maybe with an emergency declaration that might allow us to do certain things to respond to pandemics in the future? Could require some ordinance amendments. So that's kind of a brief summary, but I encourage you to read through the newsletter and a lot to think about, a lot we might be addressing over the next coming months and years. So that's my report.
Do we have to?
Yes.
Well, there's always consequences to action and inaction, so I will.
How about autonomous boats? So you can go fishing without having to worry.
I'm sure that's coming too.
Thank you.
But thank you for that information. So, okay, item number nine would be the ZBA Representatives Report, which would be Harold, right?
We haven't had a meeting.
What are you waiting for, Harold?
Our first meeting's coming up, so, and it's going to be on boathouses. The guy wants a, a meeting on a boathouse, so.
Okay, well.
I'll let you know what goes on with that on the 27th.
The 27th of this month?
Yeah, when we meet next, I'll let you know.
Okay.
Because they're saying that we're going to have a public meeting at the township on the 18th, that they're going to open it up. So I don't know.
No, they can't. We just got another governor.
I know.
End of the month.
End of the month now?
Yeah, yeah.
How about let's just do this in August?
September, October.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, okay, so.
Wait till September.
Yeah.
All right, well, thanks for that input. Item number 10 is Board Representatives Report, which would be Mark.
We have a public hearing for soil removal, June 1st at the board. And the next board meeting is May 18th. So that's all I have pertaining for planning. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it, Mark. Item number 11 is Chairperson's Report, and I just wanted to mention that I'm in receipts from our supervisor Bryson of, I guess it came from George Burgess in regards to fences. And I, does anybody else on the board get this or not? Maybe it was just an email to me.
I got it too.
Did you? Who was that?
Send email, email to us, all of us.
Okay, so everybody's got it, so I really don't need to read it. They're, they have some issues with fencing, so it's something we've looked at in the past and I guess we're going to probably get to revisit that one also, right? So, and I see Mrs. Bur, I see Paula Burgess is waving. I'm just doing my chairperson's report right now. We're going to get to, um, planning commission members and then public comments. And when we get to public comments, we'll do it there, okay? I'm sorry. I didn't catch you waving. So that's really the only thing I have, other than say thank you to everyone for the hard work and trying to make this work via Zoom. So number 12 is planning commission member comments.
Well, can I follow up with you on that fence? It's more than just a fence because it's front yard, rear yard.
Yes, and I see.
That makes it more difficult.
I get it. Okay. Any other public comments? Or not public, I'm sorry. Sorry, planning commissioner comments.
Rod, you did a very good job tonight. Thank you very much. Full of content. Appreciate it. And all the other commissioners as well.
Yes, our planners are excellent. Thank you very much, Rod, seriously. And I know it's, um, we can do things by Zoom, but it seems like it takes a lot more energy at times. You don't have to drive, which you pointed out, but it just seems to take a little bit more energy. All right, I'm going to go to number 13, which is public comments. So Chris, at this particular point, I guess, how do you want to handle it? Unmute everybody? Or you still want to do the hand raising?
Um, what's your preference? If I unmute everybody, we're not going to know who's.
How about we just do the hand raising and then we'll deal with people who don't have a photo or video going, okay?
Okay.
So raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment, please. I think Ms. Burgess, Paula.
She needs to be unmuted.
She is. Chris is working.
Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, I do live on, I live on the North Channel.
Can I stop you just for a minute, ma'am? I'm sorry. I should ask you to state your name and address for the record.
Sure. It's Paula Burgess and my address is 5909 Point Trumbull Road, and that's in Clay Township, Michigan. And I live directly between Pearl Beach Boulevard and Maynard Drive. I live on the, the one, the one is a Pearl Beach Drain Ditch. The other exit would be, would be Pearl Beach Boulevard. This is a stretch of 12 homes that sit on the North Channel. It's always been kind of a private, our private little area of the world, but there is a three-foot walking easement there. If, if anyone wanted to walk down there, there is an opening and it is available to walk through. And our one neighbor, the newest neighbor, she's lived there for, this will be three years, she decided she wanted to put a fence up for her two dogs. All of us being neighbors told her that you put the fence on the roadside. Well, when she tried to get permission to do that, she was told that that is now our front yard. That's not our backyard and that you can't put a fence there unless it's a decorative fence. If she needed a fence, she would have to put it on the North Channel side. That was very, very shocking to all of us because we had no idea. There's never been fences along the North Channel. You can get in a boat and you can drive from St. John's Drive to the Harbor Club and there is no fences. But this young lady was told that if she wanted a fence, she was going to have to put it on the North Channel because that was the way the, the.
Because that's the.
That's the ruling. That's how.
Backyard.
That's now our backyard. Now, that's a problem for us because most of us have 50-foot yard, 50-foot lots. So what would happen if we all wanted to fence in our yard? Do you think that our property value would go down? Do you think this would look pretty around here anymore? But anyways, what we really need to do is we're asking that you can change along the North Channel, the Middle Channel, the South Channel, and the Saint Clair River, that our front yard should be facing the river and our backyard should be facing the highway. That's our biggest need. Because once that verbiage is changed, then your backyard would be the road and that's where a fence should be, not on the river.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it very much. Anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Anybody raising their hand? Wave at me. Grays?
Yep.
Just a moment, please.
Hang on one second. It's not letting you.
Can you hear us?
You can now. Go right ahead. State your name.
Tom Shipper, 5887 Point Trumbull Road.
Can you say that one more time? I didn't hear that.
Tom Shipper, 5887 Point Trumbull Road. I'm on the other side, the east side of 5903.
Could you spell your last name, please? Thank you.
Okay, so, you know, by putting the fence there and changing the law in 2016, I was told by Artie Bryson that the state constitution wrote it that way because some guy had kids and he wanted it that way. And however, everywhere in Michigan, waterfront property is waterfront property. So it did get changed in 2016. And it puts us now in non-conforming with, with the, the new rules because there's, you can't have trailers on the roadside now. The different storage, boat methods and this and that, it's, it's getting a little confusing. And the whole time, the fence was put up without a posted permit. And I'm a plumbing contractor and I've never been able to do a job without posting either first the, the billing permit goes up and then the plumbing permit. So that, that's another concern. And that's it.
Thank you very much for your comments. We will definitely look into this matter, obviously. So we've discussed fences in the past and front yard, backyards and waterfronts, and it looks like we're going to get to address it again. How's that? Okay? Appreciate that. Any other public comments? Please raise your hand, wave at us.
I see Donna Gordon waved her hand.
If you say so, where is she?
The bottom.
Oh, okay.
Hello? Hello?
Is that Donna Gordon that's talking?
William Gordon, if you can hear me.
Yeah, I can hear you. The name comes up as Donna Gordon, so.
Okay, well, she's sitting next to me.
No, that's okay. Can you please state, state your name?
William Gordon. Address is 5915 Point Trumbull Drive.
Thank you.
Pearl Beach, Michigan. And I'm two doors down from the newly erected fence and I just want to agree with my neighbors that it's ridiculous to be on the riverside, you know? And there's a, a big controversy there now is which is the front yard and the backyard. And the front yard along any riverfront property, I have two properties and the other on the other side to state, and my front yard is the riverside property. And I've had, over my lifetime, a number of riverside properties and the front yard has always been the riverside yard. And this is, like Tom said, really confusing now with storage and all this stuff. We're, we're supposed to start putting our trailers in the riverside. We moved there to look at the river and not at a fenced-in yard, which the young lady got permission to put it there, I guess. And, you know, I, if I wanted to look my front yard to the road, I would have bought a house on Marsh Road or something, you know? And, but I didn't. I bought it to look at the river. And I don't think we need a dog pen out there for any reason. Any fence, not just for a dog fence.
Thank you very much for your comments. Appreciate it. Looks like a John Lentz. There, if you're.
Hello?
Could you please state your name and address?
Yeah, John Lentz, 5931 Point Trumbull.
Okay.
I got a recording from your February 26th Joint Planning Commission zoning board meeting, where you were talking about the boathouses. And. You stated that the boathouse can't be with sides on, on, in the front yard on the river, but if you have a side canal, you could mount it in the backyard. You could have one built. And one of the board members mentioned that, I think it might have been Mark, that the front of the yard is the riverside. So you's already stated which is the front yard and which is the backyard.
And then all this has been changed.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. It was Dennis Zamansky.
Shamansky.
Yes.
That's on the ZBA, not planning, right?
It was the joint meeting.
It was the joint meeting. Yeah. And no one, no one argued that the front yard is not on the water. So you can, you can watch the recording. It's at like the 9 minute 47 second mark where they state that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your information. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who would like to make a public comment? I'm not seeing anybody. Is anybody else, Chris? You see anybody?
Do you want me to go to the ones that don't have photos now?
Sure, why not? We'll do like we did last time.
Okay, I'm going to Kelly.
No, no, no comment. Thank you.
Yes, I, I have a comment.
Okay, please state your name and your address.
Glenn Rank, 5953 Point Trumbull Road, Pearl Beach, Michigan.
Glenn, could you please, please spell your last name?
R-A-N-K.
Thank you. Go ahead.
My only comment is that our deed restrictions that we have for these riverfront lots do provide for a, a, a footpath running between the river, along the river's edge and the homes. This property that I live in has been in my family for 85 years and the river's edge has, has changed various times. And when my grandfather initially built this place back in the mid 30s, the, the waterfront was substantially closer to the, to these homes. And I have the last sidewalk that was, we used to have sidewalks that ran the whole, across all these homes between the river, riverfront and the, the house itself. Mine is still there and I, I just wonder what happened with this restriction. It, it's a footpath that was available for people to go from, from their homes on the riverfront all the way over to the public dock pier and on Pearl Beach Boulevard there. That's my only comment.
Thank you very much for your comment. Appreciate it.
Going to Sirelli.
Yes, this is John and Jerry Sirelli, 5925 Point Trumbull Road, Algenack, Michigan. And I just in support, I'm one of the newer families that moved in the area and just in support of our, our neighbors, Paula Birch, Bill and Donna Gordon, John Lentz and Glenn. I just wanted to provide my support with their comments too.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment.
Going to New, N-E-W.
Glenn's or the other one?
Just New, N-E-W.
Anybody on N-E-W who wants to make a comment? Hello? I'm not hearing anything, so we'll move to the next one.
Kelly?
I already answered. Nope. No comment. Thank you, Kelly. Sorry about that. Um, I'm taking a guess. It looks like maybe we covered everybody.
It looks like it.
All right. I'm assuming we have no more public comments. Last time for somebody to raise a hand. I don't see anything. So we are going to, and I would thank everybody for joining this meeting, but we're going to move to number 14, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Wait a minute, who's, who made the motion?
I'll let Whitey have it.
Okay, we're going to go with Whitey and Keith. How's that? Okay, so we have a motion for adjournment. We have Keith's support. On a favor.
Aye, and I'd like to thank everybody for showing up so nicely, so bright and early.
Thank you to everybody who participated for being very patient and following the protocol rules that we hope to establish, so. Because it looks like we're going to be doing this for a while. So we have another couple of public hearings coming up and we'll see where we go from there. Rod, thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. So we'll be talking, I'm sure. Did somebody move, did somebody mute you, Rod?
Yeah, I got it. Never mind. Yes, thank you so much. I muted myself.
Oh, I thought Chris was getting really good with this mute button.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Good job with the Madam Chair.
Thank you. If anybody needs anything else, you know how to get ahold of me. And Sue, if I can do anything to help you with the minutes and getting where the things need to be, let me know, okay?
Okay, thank you. I'll email you, Whitey.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is everybody okay? We're going to end the meeting. We'll just move on for a nice evening now at 8:51. How's that? Okay.
Yep.
Night, everybody.
Night, everybody.
Good night.